This conference will now be recorded.
Call to order, the October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four work session at six thirty P. M. Meeting. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Okay. I'd like to make a motion, accept the agenda tonight. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilor Norman.
Officer Ash?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Will?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. It's like we have priorities updated, so that's what we're here to discuss tonight.
So you guys, this is your new order from your ranking. And I don't know, do you want, do you want to ask me questions, or do you want me to go through every project? Either way.
How many projects do you update for?
Well, I just go down the list. I don't know.
Is it a significant amount?
I don't know. I just got back from training. I don't know until I start talking. I just learned a whole bunch of stuff.
We could go down the list.
Okay.
Already been done.
Yeah. So we're still back and forth with Blue Mountain. They did the voiceover phone changeover. We're having a little bit of shoes with the phone. We're still waiting for the cameras to show up so that Blake can make sure the right electrical is in the electrical plan. Short of that, we're probably sometime in the next three months, just going to be installing the pole and the base for the pole. And then hopefully the cameras will follow. That's where we're at. One of the things that caused them a little bit of trouble is they offered the cameras. And then the number of customers they have in Vernonia doesn't even bring in the covering the cameras. So they had to go back to their finance people and like wheel and deal that, hey, we already promised this donation. So we said, we couldn't do advertising, but we could thank them like in the newspaper, thank them as a company for the donation. And that might spur some others. And then I did send them. The Columbia County just went out for RFP for broadband throughout the county and underserved areas. And I said, hey, FYI, did you guys see this? So maybe they'll take the opportunity and put in a bid at the county. So the Corey Clatsup manhole is still part of the overflow, which they're going to start working on. That section of the project tomorrow. We had some bigger in the springboard. We'll just bump down to the next one. We had an issue because where the sewer pipe comes to weed, West E and bumps into weed, where that road is too narrow for two cars to pass. And so we were either going to have twenty-minute closures, or we worked an agreement with Joe Riley, who is the son of Joe Riley, who passed away, but he owns his dad's house now. And there's like a little neighborhood road that goes along the edge of his property that has a gate that goes from springboard to fairway that the dad had opened in the winter time for his neighbors that he was friends with as their, so they didn't have to go up the hill on springboard. And then Robert Sheffield is another owner that owns part of that road. So we signed an agreement with them this morning. We went out and walked it for from seven A. M. to seven P. M. The neighbors can go in and out. Deliveries will be have to come in E after hours or as they fit in. Bus service changed, so we've contacted all the parents and the buses that they're going to be picked up on fairway. And then we've notified the emergency services that that's going to be their route with maps. Everybody and all the neighbors have been noticed. So that starts tomorrow. We only have from the fifteenth to the twenty-fourth of October to get that section done because that's all the time the neighbor, Joe Riley, wanted us to use it, partly because he's going hunting. And his wife says, I want to deal with the neighbors after that. She wants her gate locked, so that's what we're going to do. So that's what's happening there in that section. Also related to springboard, the boring pit, the boring company changed their mind. They're digging the pit at Hawkins and going this way. And that will happen, I believe, unless I haven't been here since twelve thirty, so I don't know how far they are in the boring pit. Unless that's completed, they'll be there and then they'll come back and do the boring after. But if the pit's dug, the boring company could come in. I don't know where.
They're working on it. The backhoe is there.
They are. I don't know if that'll be done before they need to start doing this with the shorter window. So it's going to be kind of means and methods of how they pull all that off. But everything still seems to be on time and in budget for what we have going on. And then we will have a construction meeting this Thursday for any updates or whatever. So the Louisiana water main upgrade, that is the one north. They had, I did not get a chance to ask Jeffrey if those last services are connected to the new. They were up doing it, but I don't remember if there was one still left. Isn't there one still left?
I'm not sure if I'm remembering the previous one that they had to reconnect to.
So this one's the north and I it's either they're all done or there's one left to connect. Yeah.
That's I believe that's done. They've done decommissioned that line because they moved the hydrant.
Okay, that's what it.
Services are done, the hydrant's still moving.
Okay. I knew there was some something left up there. So Louisiana North South connection, that's moving along. They've been kind of, they left the old main in production and then they're hooking new services to the new main so that they're not having to do all that disruption. So that's where they were at the last time I talked to them and Robert about it. The lake docks, the lake docks are complete. I saw that I have an email from Allison. Her bid came in pretty reasonable compared to what it had been in the past for doing their, the whole thing, partly because we're moving the old docks ourselves and partly because they're not transporting. So it did come to like fourteen thousand and something for them to bring a crane to offload them, to float them over, to scuba dive under and anchor the two new docks and the lock-on dock. So we're just kind of getting things scheduled with them. Once I read that email and schedule her, then contact Topper and they'll navigate all that. I did get Robert Watts, the map. And Jeff and our Jeff and him, we're going to discuss the grading for the old dock placement today. But I wasn't here, so I don't know where they got on that. The last, the lake fix, the bathroom. So Mitch's unfortunately did not get to this. So I, he feels like if I can get, if we can get the light removed and he can get up there, it's not going to take him a long time because it's not like he's got to have it exposed, but I'm nervous about the weather. So I don't know if there's a window where we know there's a good try time, he'll try it. If there's not, I don't want to risk it. So we'll be back when there's drier times in the spring. Painting of the shipping container, done. And on top of another thing that's not on our list, the chairs, done. So if you guys have a seat in one of the chairs over there that you asked us to have redone.
Someone sunk in the one still the other night.
There was one left when she sat. Rick hadn't taken the last one. Yeah. And then it's so. I'm like, oh, they don't notice they took the last one and brought it back. So. Yeah, so they're very sturdy. They'll be good for a good, long time. Street improvement plan, that's not really. Anything going on of it other than not exactly connected to street improvements plan, but Public Works will, we did put in the budget, as you guys will remember, the money to rent a bigger crack ceiling and do like a one-week wham-bam and attack a lot of the crack ceiling with a bigger unit. So that is in the budget to happen in relation to streets. The logging mill dump property, that's a new one for our, went moved up a few spots. Louisiana stormwater master plan, where is that? That's the one that we have to keep, we have to revisit. I'm probably going to do a work session with you guys because that's where we're going to need to do. There's enough work left to do on Louisiana with getting the sewer across at E and different things that are future Louisiana projects, and that will come into play with that plan.
We do, we are working on somewhat of a master plan with all the developments with our engineer and the applicant. And he's paying for all that engineering. So that is also in the works. More than likely, in the long run, have one big stormwater detention facility up there instead of a whole bunch of them, which will.
Because we were like.
Accommodating.
Staff's been like, take two of your lots and create the system for all of your, like, why are you keep trying to do it in each little section?
Especially maybe a lot that's already compromised with the wetland or something that.
Yeah. And do some plantings and stuff, yeah.
Use part of it and.
Yeah.
Just enhance the wetland.
Yeah. We have some movement on that. It's just not a factor of information for you guys.
Cool.
To go back just a second, when are we going to do the bulk crack ceiling?
It'll have to be sometime in the, the hot, you know, warm time.
Next year.
Yeah, twenty twenty-five.
Done with all street improvement.
Well, this is, this is just the street improvements plan execution. So this is that rolling report that keeps changing and adding. That's what this is. The paving's all done for this year on that. But then this just kind of tickler reminds staff to bring you guys a new report with updated pitch, whatever for SCA. Do the crack ceiling, right?
And I think there was a little bit of thought into this because the one year we're paving, chip ceiling.
Yes.
And we have an off year, so then the crews would be more available. And plus, maybe not major projects going on this year was, was. And when with losing one person, kind of right in that time period.
Yeah. It was just going to be really difficult to get the eighty hours done with the crew we had and all the other things, so. The I N I master plan in-house. Why is that not ringing a bell at all?
Yeah.
That's sealing the manholes.
Stilling the manhole.
Why is it say, I guess what's confusing me is gather data and send to Public Works. That must be an old note because they're, okay, I don't have anything going to Public Works on it.
And I think.
Just the data and the.
I think the thought process and that is the same thing like the meter program in the past of.
Yeah.
We got to figure out how big this elephant is we're going to try to eat.
Yeah.
Because just looking at it, potentially it could be like the meter replacement. We're going to probably have to have a little, we have a new stream to support that program to be effective. So it'll go into rates probably if we have to.
Are you talking about making laterals?
No, manholes.
Manholes. I N I into the manhole. And some of that runs down the.
And we did get in the training to do the grouting and that kind of pressure grouting themselves. So it's just coming up like, right now, I think we have, what, five a month is the expectation for installing new meters, swapping out old tired meters for radio read. So it will be something like that. It will be like, we're going to hit this many manholes every year and start with the poorest and get to the best. Like we do streets and everything.
Was there about forty total?
We did, we did forty.
We did?
Yeah, we did forty. It's like two hundred and twenty-one or something like that.
That need.
In the whole system. So they've, they've done the mapping, they've gone and graded them. That's Jonathan's kind of baby as he goes and.
That's what I just know if that was the ones that had been graded as needing improvement or that's all of them.
Yeah, that's all of them.
Okay, so the only ones that have been done are the ones that happened during the training?
Yes.
Okay.
In this, this last fiscal year, yeah. So that's.
So that'll come, I guess, the data.
Well, it's not that notice.
Need to do.
Yeah, so Ben already has that.
Okay.
So probably what happens is in the spring, because we have, it has to be wet, right? We have to have, not the highest flow, but everything's wet. He'll probably presented Public Works and Council the report of it and what our plan is with whatever staff's coming up with, like how many we think. If it takes us two weeks and we do twenty, or it takes us two weeks and we do ten, what is it? You know, kind of get pick their brains and get a realistic plan.
And then do we have funding to start on that in the spring or that would wait until the new budget?
Well, we put funding in the budget to buy the materials. So it's just going to be a shift of man hours to a specific project.
And we cut that.
Okay.
Training short to conserve those funds so we'd have the money to buy.
Yeah.
Material.
Yeah. We didn't want them to keep, well, they kind of slow rolled at the end and we were like, we'll keep our five thousand.
So we're just expecting an update in the spring is the current status.
Yeah, so you'll get kind of a, this is the plan for the, how we're going to tackle it. And maybe this year is a test, right? So we give ourselves two weeks, we see how many can we tackle? And then we set the plan for the future of so many a year.
Say tackle?
Huh? Tackle?
I thought you said a tackle.
Did I?
I think so, which is very cute.
I don't know. Timberland and fund management, that's a new, so.
FDCs, you missed.
Oh, sorry, SDCs increased study. So I'm currently working on the draft RFP right now. We, the city of Medford had a really good kind of mock-up online that we're kind of copying, not in the exact same thing because we're asking for a little bit different. So hopefully that will go out in the twenty twenty-five February, I'm thinking, once I get it through everybody to make sure it has what we need. And then that's basically, they take all the plans that we've recently done. So the water master plan, the parks master plan, the sewer plan, comprehensive plan, streets, TSP. They take all of those documents and look at what is slated to be our future twenty years of projects and then propose adjustments to our SDCs to bring in the revenue to tackle those projects. So that's how they basically. And then they also kind of look at other communities, our size with our similar demographics and what they're charging. And then they come up with a fee that they would propose back to us in their final report. And then council would, in the next master fee schedule change, those would get changed to that in July. The tot lot. So this is one of those things that I tried to.
Timber.
Oh, sorry. No, I said that, it's a new one.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, and that you got, we probably need to schedule a work session to like, talk about what we want to get out of it. And what are we looking for? What are our deliverables? So that's kind of a future schedule at work session. National Park Service, that one's kind of fallen off. I try, I emailed the office of the place that wanted us to do all this. But that was when I was mayor, is when I knew that person in that office. So I've been trying to get somebody to send pictures and like, hey, does this suffice for you? And I can't find out if anyone cares about it. I'll keep trying to find who is in that job so I can send them something. And then, oh, sorry, crack ceiling everywhere. That is, we're going to rent the bigger machine this year to do kind of a big project all at once. Dress as much as we can. The Corey Hill Stormwater Connectivity Master Plan, that one I didn't ask Robert about. I should. So I don't have an update for that. Robert and I have a lot of subjects. Lake Campground Project Sign, we're done with that one. So if, so related to that, I did get information back on the OPRD grant. There has been school facilities that have been built using OPRD funds. The unfortunate part is that they became city, the cities got the money and then the city managed and oversaw the property and it was the city as somewhat kind of owner. So I'm like, that won't work for us. This school district, we don't want in there and they don't want us in there. So we did, I haven't contacted them because I wanted to tell you guys first. But Stephanie and I did kind of do some research and found some options like NFL has a grant, like different for youth facilities. There's different sports and different teams that do do that kind of function. So that's going to be, most of the state funding sources require it to be a tribe, a nonprofit or a municipality or county agency under the keeping control of it. And so I don't think it'll work for them. So what it looks like is if we want to change this to like phase one or something.
That's what I was going to suggest is that we don't remove it, but we.
Put phase one and then we'll bring that to Parks and start talking this, this public work staff about.
Trying to get.
Working that in scheduling.
And work done.
Yeah. So we'll just change that to phase.
What about these new regulations that might be coming in?
That's what I was just going to ask.
For the paving?
No.
No, for FEMA.
FEMA.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's what I mean. It's going to, the one thing it will affect in that zone potentially is the paving. And so it's either phase three, because really we can, it's shaded X. It's like the edge of.
Shaded X?
Yes, it's like the edge of shaded X. That part didn't get the.
So it wouldn't be required then?
Well, but they're still all the same. It's the same down the line. It just depends on how many square feet you're doing, I think. There's like a threshold to hit or something, or it's a one-for-one or in shaded X, it's a, there's a different ratio in shaded X. I think it's one-for-one in the flood and the flood, or nothing in the floodway.
It was the fringe that's got the ratios. And Ben was saying the shaded X.
Is the French.
Well, he said anything that was not a island, that he was going to propose removing out of that because it's not in, the special flood hasn't.
And we're not required to man.
We're not required.
So maybe it wouldn't have the restrictions, but it could be if it's shaded X, it would have those restrictions.
Well, he was saying.
What I'm saying.
Wasn't the A O?
A E.
A E.
For shaded X.
Yeah, well, he was saying the shaded X, we have quite a bit of, we've been making people.
Right.
And says, it looks like a lot of that, we're going to have to drop doing that.
Yeah, because we don't want them to be held in the same.
Island within.
Right, if it's a Loma or, yeah. So there could be a paving restriction there, Donald, or not. But the working there shouldn't be a problem, like, because we're not, other than the urts and the bathroom, we're not, you know, we're just, they're flat.
Surfaces, yeah.
Yeah, so they'll have to be, we're paying attention to it, but we think that area is still probably the least affected of the other properties. There's a few that are totally affected, so. So we're hoping that January or February of twenty-five, they're going to come test that well. That's the goal, to finally get this off the list. And if, if we fit their orphan site criteria, great. If we don't, then we just have to keep monitoring that dump and paying the fee, which is not terrible, but I'd love not to pay a fee that's kind of useless. So then maybe the next time we'd have to deal with it is if we ever put a reservoir up there or when we log. So. That's kind of hope, hoping they test it and we fit their criteria. So Mary Ann can have a thing and we can be out of the regulatory oversight for that old dump. Lake boat ramp. So this was just on our, the years are wrong because the temporary fix was done. But we looked at doing maybe some marine funding to do a push-in or a replacement for pushing in like a boat ramp. Because cutting the ground and then pushing in a boat ramp, concrete one. Maintenance plan. So we've kind of had and lost, oh, did you have something else? Oh, I thought I.
Oh, no.
Oh, cleared your throat or something. We've had like gains and losses on the staff that are kind of doing the maintenance plan. Mitch has been trying to take care of the park post units and all the different equipment that way. Trucks and stuff are fine, but it's really those small engines that we got to keep, keep up to date. Weed Avenue Water Service, this one still is not in. It's the weird kind of one-off. It's to fix a friction problem. The people aren't affected other than their pressure is a little bit reduced. But this is the one we missed trenching when we had the trencher, the long distance we needed to trench. So that's why it's still here, hoping maybe we get a trencher in again. The Public Works Committee still has the sidewalk master plan.
Yes, Ben is working on the map, so our reports done.
Okay, awesome. So hopefully you guys will be getting that soon. Anderson Park, our V site increase, this is not budgeted. We'd need a grant to probably do it and it's just kind of been floating. Because it's a great idea, we just need the time and grant opportunity.
That's another one that could be affected by the FEMA.
Yeah, not so much if we're just doing new stanchions. I don't, I don't know. It will depend.
Well.
Is it within a hundred and seventy feet?
We just wouldn't be able, oh.
That might be the trick.
Might be, yeah, the one seventy or the any paving.
Yeah. Yeah, we might not.
Always put gravel in, I guess.
Yeah.
Or the expensive asphalt.
Right, depending on if you, if we already have a project, maybe you put it in with gravel. And then when you have a project with impervious or pervious asphalt, you have them just do those pads or something. But that's one I'm going to ask Ben about mapping because we want to make sure we're, we'll just take it off if there's no chance with the one seventy.
He's got the map.
Yeah.
Does the pervious asphalt have a shorter lifespan as well?
No, it just, the weird part is, is it's pervious, but then it just fills with debris and becomes impervious anyway. But they would require you to put it in. Yeah. Super great. Anderson Park Boat, Boat Ramp, this one, I don't think we have any answers on. It's, it comes up about every time steelhead season comes and people get stuck or want to get to the river and someone doesn't like it and then we talk about it and then we don't. So I don't know that it has enough users to warrant, like, I think it warrants its placement here. It's not, no one's really causing harm to anybody else and it's, the fishermen are still getting it. The city welcome sign, so that's, you guys determined it would be a community project and I believe Rick's going to bring you stuff to that in the future upcoming meeting. The lake leak resolution, still holding. We'll address it if we find it or see it, or Dale tells us the lake's going down. And then the Dewey Pool Fish Ladder, that now that, once the sewer projects complete, then we'll revisit with ODFW because we will have done the skin in the game that makes them come and talk reality with us about a fish ladder. And then that would help us to keep our right to repair Dewey Pool should something happen to it. What questions do you guys have?
So there's, especially in this kind of lower blue section, there's a lot of timelines that probably need to be updated.
Sure.
So if we look all the way actually from, I mean, they're throughout, there's a lot of twenty twenty-threes in here that need to.
Well, it's because when they, that's when they started. So I just didn't want someone to say, yeah, that started two years ago, you're trying to short it.
No.
Well, then just the end time, I guess, needs to update.
Yeah.
This isn't all going to get done.
No, no. And some of it, it really should have an unknown date because it's unknown and we'll just change that. Yeah.
Because especially it's like, it's all, the old stuff is all the lower priority stuff, so yeah.
Well, it's like things that don't rise.
Keeps happening up here.
Yeah. Any other questions? Give you a five-minute little recap of what I went to talk or learn about today, which was PFAS, which is the forever chemical in your wastewater. So the EPA put down some developing guidance on drinking water, how we're supposed to test to see if any exists in our source and that kind of stuff. They put those guidelines out April of this year. By the end of this year, they should have the wastewater ones out. But basically they're going to try and address it at the producer end. So the people, the. So the P, the community, the communities or industries that are the produce, using PFAS, they're gonna try and capture it ahead of it going into our wastewater systems. They're gonna put all, a lot of the compliance requirements on the user or the corporation. But what, some of the things that are a little concerning to us are, there's some pretty reasonable ways to deal with it. One of them is activated charcoal, where you just basically put your wa- put a big thick five feet of activated charcoal, your water filters through it. The PFAS is a carbon fluoride, short leg, chemical, and it absorbs to the charcoal. And then the water keeps going through. There's another version that's like a resin media where they put it into big containers and it filters through and the ions in the media are positively char- negatively charged and they attract the positive, and so they hold it that way. That one's a little more expensive because you either have to, then you have to dispose of that media when it becomes ineffective, where the charcoal, you can thermally regenerate it. Like you can heat it up to a thing where it lets go of the PFAS and then you can reuse it, or you can just incinerate it with the temperatures 100 or 1,440 degrees Celsius for one second of thermal will eliminate the PFAS, break the bond, right? And that's what's damaging, is that they stay in the bonded pairs. When they're more dangerous and they can cause disruptions to immune systems, they're finding people have it in their bodies. So now they're knowing that we're gonna have it in our wastewater systems. So the same treatment you can do for water at the source, you can do tertiaryly at the end of your water treatment. We talked about discs and DAFs. The disc actually could be one element. That really fine mesh membrane will stop some of the, not all of the PFAS molecules, but they're, they had a range of size, so it would stop the bigger stuff, not the smaller stuff. One of the craziest things that I about like fell off my chair was they were talking about the ways you, so bio solids are what settles at the bottom of lagoon one. And every 25 years, you scrape it out of there and you put it land applied to someone's fields. Well, now they're figuring out, you can't, we're not gonna be able to do that. And even some of the poor guys that were wastewater people there said they have drying beds where they lay the bio solids out to dry and now that ground's contaminated. So probably you're looking at incineration. That's probably gonna be the only way to. And so if anybody wants to start a company for mobile incineration, that would be really profitable in the state of Oregon. But the one crazy thing that made me fall off my chair was, they're talking about how you can appropriately dispose of these the contaminated media, whatever. And the options were incineration, a chemical, which like for the resin, they would mix it with some chemicals. The PFAS falls off of that and then now you have a smaller amount of PFAS in a different solution, which that seems nightmarish to me. The one that I about freaked out about was that they're going, EPA and their guidance is going to let you drill into the ground and pump your PFAS soluble water and contain it underground. And I said, where's that allowed in the nation? And they were like, the guy's like, well, I'm not sure, but that's in their gu- this is their guidance. I said, that's very interesting. They're the same people that won't let me put clean effluent in there. But they're gonna let someone, some corporation drill into the rock, put all this forever chemical and hope it stays. And he's, he looks at me and he's like, yeah, that doesn't seem right. I was like. But that's their current regulation advice, guidance for wastewater. I was like, oh, or for, sorry, for the PFAS remnants.
Did they ever talk about ultraviolet, right?
So they did, they didn't, they talked about thermal, they talked about a chemical version. I don't know that ultraviolet would make, break the bond. You have to break whatever the carbon and fluoride bond is for it to not be the immune suppressant, causes liver damage, all the things. I mean, it might be, I've heard of ultraviolet.
A lot of.
Water. I know they do it for disinfection, for sure. I've seen, yeah. This is more getting that chemical pair out of your water, which, yeah, it's just part. And the regulation is gonna be four parts per trillion. So he said if four parts per million were four seconds, it would be 11 and a half days, right? If four parts per billion would be four seconds in 31 years. And four parts per trillion is four seconds and three, 31,700 years. That's the, does that make sense what I'm saying? Like, that's the ratio of what, he said the other way to think about it is it's one drop in 20 Olympic, Olympic swimming pools is the contamination of PFAS were allowed.
Did they talk about a testing program or everybody's got to test their own or what?
So if, you do have to test your own, unless you have like a visible sign, a known industry, then there is money for you. But it has to be, you have to either see something, have an industry you believe in your, above your source that would be trickling it down, or send out for your own test. But the testing is like stainless steel, silicone or HDP vessels, 100% cotton clothes. Because even if our mixed poly, if our clothes have any stretch waterproofness or grease or stain resistance, they certainly contain PFAS. And so even the tester leaning over with a poly shirt can contaminate the sample. So it's gonna be a huge. Yeah, but I think with as small as our system is and relating it to the other size systems, the activated charcoal in a compression tank where you can remove it. I got a card from Clean Harbors, which is a incineration company that does that on the West Coast. They have six huge incinerators on the West Coast. They do exactly this type of thing. They've been doing it in California for 15 years or something, 2010, I think it was, so.
Incinerate in the charcoal.
Yeah, as a media. And which makes sense, because I use it as a, as a deodorizer in my fridge. I have it like, it's in a bag. It's like a little thing. And you just put it out in the sun to re-energize the porousness of it. So that's, you would, you would do the flash burn, it would keep the stuff and you could reuse it, or you can get a whole new product. But that one, all of us were thinking cheap and we were thinking activated charcoal's the way to go. Because the other ones just seems, unless you had to produce a lot of water at a fast pace for a big population, you wouldn't use the filters or anything like that. It would just be, that's the only place where it would make sense, is you had so many people.
Did they say what the cost was to do a test?
No, they didn't really get.
Labs that are cert- certified?
They said you need to check and make sure your, the lab you're sending your sample to is state certified for that criteria, because they, they want to go down to like the point 005 of the micron or something. So you have to find a, but then, I mean, the risky part is if we don't get a Oregon metro lab that's certified in that, how will the, I mean, you'll be transporting this to some other state. So hopefully we get, hopefully like, we use Alpha Environmental, which is in Portland. Hopefully they are.
Yeah.
I'm thinking those kind of bigger places should, if they're not, they soon will be, hopefully, but.
Because, you know, we kind of think, oh, Vernonia is probably removed from this, but we got the sunset rest area right in our headwaters. I don't know what they were doing up there. They had it closed down last time I went to the coast.
Probably sealing the vaults or something.
I think they got a drain field, like.
So one of the, one of the interesting ways that they've been dealing with it, so one of the things that it's in, which is not in Oregon anymore, according to my firefighter, is the AAA firefight, fire suppression phones had it for years, right? And a lot of airports have, are finding where they had a crash landing and they went and sprayed, that now that's leaching. Well, they're finding the plume and then they go in and they excavate that material out and they put that activated charcoal layer in the middle of the plume, so the plume runs by it and then it is cleaned by the time it gets to the aquifer.
Really?
So there's, people are, they're thinking.
At least there's a solution.
It was a lot of brain. We're, I was just like driving home like, oh my God, there's PFAS in everything. It's in plastic, it's in, you know, we had to like guess in the room what had PFAS in it. So we were like, okay, we're thinking like slippery, non-slip, they, we were telling, and so we did like a word collage. We all shot words out at them, like boots. And we were thinking, they're wearing rubber boots at the wastewater treatment plant, so they don't step in poo. But the poo's safer than the boot. And so it's like, when you get to that stage in life, you're like, what? That's crazy.
Oh, boy.
So that was a little tidbit. They're sending me the slide deck and all the stuff, so once I get it all ordered on. You guys, you can have fun reading about, because most, most likely, we did have a DEQ person on there in the state revolving, Clean Water State Revolving Fund. They won't pay for you to test, but should you find industry or evidence, they will pay, you can do a loan for the design and planning, for the capital improvement. They're, they're the agency that would help us, because it's coming down the line from their higher up, so.
It come from that old Leucford plant up PG.
Good. You never know what was even used there.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, most of the stuff they said are like textiles, because a lot of textiles are using it. 3M and DuPont had big lawsuits.
F long.
They sent, they sent links, because you can see, if you have it, you can go to that class action suit and get some of the billions of dollars 3M and DuPont have to pay. Yeah, so it was really interesting, just all the different industries that use it. And hopefully, in by doing this, they're, you know, the compliance being so stringent at the producer of the bad stuff, they're hoping they're just gonna slowly trade out and go to the non-PFAS alternatives. But because it's carbon and, because it's carbon and fluoride, it's an organic product, but it doesn't work in the organic human body. It causes a lot of shovel. So, very interesting.
Yeah.
That was my five minutes spiel about PFAS.
Just get a test on our water, so we know where we're at.
Yeah. Maybe you want to, maybe you don't.
What do we, they're viewed about 300,000, 300,000 gallons a day?
Yeah.
Something like that, Dale?
Oh, that would be, that would be early high day, I think.
Well, between 150 and.
Okay.
Right, 150 is about what we'd put out a day, right?
Well.
I thought it was more than that.
I think our highest month I ever seen was nine million gallons, divided by 30, whatever that is.
Yeah.
That, that, yeah, they, they, they took a half, I think Jeff said they've done half, half a million.
Well, 300 is less than.
Yeah.
300.
Yeah.
Pretty average.
I think so.
That's, that's a lot of water. Why that be a pretty big charcoal container?
Yeah, but you can also do it in like a containment, like a tank, right? So you would have, and you could even have, and on the drinking water side, that containment is beef, like, you gotta pick where you're gonna put it. You don't want the, the carbon to be filled up with debris or BOD or TSS. You want it specifically used, so you have to time the placement in your system to catch it.
Chlorine contact.
Right, right. So.
Some people might not, might like that less.
Oh, yes.
You know, the, the best thing, that one of the things they said with the activated charcoal is it actually improves the water quality and taste.
Yeah, it's a filter.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's your Brita.
Yeah, so we'll never have a chlorine problem again.
I used to live up Pebble Creek for 11 years and that's full of hydrogen chloride. And, and I had a, a feed pump chlorinator in the charcoal. Went through the regular bleach, 35 gallon tank, a one gallon bleach and water. And then it went through a cylinder, a charcoal.
Yeah.
Worked great.
Well, I was sharing information with the presenter and I said, you know, people do that in their own bodies with activated charcoal as a binder, to get toxins to tackle, attach onto it.
You use when you would consume something poisonous.
Yeah, yeah. And he's like, well, does it pull the Patner trans on? I'm like, I don't know. I'm not one of them yet. I was just sharing information. Yeah.
My grandma used to show that on. You, you know, when you've consumed it.
Super great. Well, that's all I have.
So are they mandating everybody tests though?
The, the interim guidance for drinking water just came down in April and they're wanting, there's a date at the end of it, an end date of when they're gonna start putting the real regulation on. So they're trying to entice people to test, because then we can get in with the planning and the, all the things, so.
Well, they're coming.
Yeah, and for sure, the final guidance will be out in December, from what the EPA said for the wastewater. But I think activated charcoal is our friend. It's cheap. It's either from wood, coconut husks. It's like the most natural, the simplest, the cheapest for, for our system, I think. But we'll look at all of them, I'm sure.
Just one more thing.
Right. But I really want to talk to whoever at the EPA told us we can't use hyperiak, but you can inject PFAS.
Yeah, yeah.
That seems like.
Or she's thinking drilling a little deeper than hyperiak.
They are, but what I'm saying is, even if it's in rock, you get an earthquake underground and there you go, PFAS in someone's aquifer and you don't know where it came from.
Yeah.
But he couldn't tell me anywhere that had had approval to do it yet, so maybe it's like one that they're gonna get enough pushback on that it won't be an option, hopefully, but not in Oregon, but could be anywhere else. Scary what we're okay with.
Down to the oil, or well, that's the gas and not oil.
It's not the well.
Might be on the same theory as what they're doing now. They're injecting CO2 back in old abandoned oil wells.
Yeah.
That might be the same principle they're talking about.
Yeah, and they, and it hadn't criteria, it had to go deep, it had to be proved that. But I'm like, how do you really do that, really? It just seems like we're putting that problem in future generations' pockets, but.
Any other questions? I guess I'll adjourn this meeting at 7:20 PM. Meeting adjourned?
All right.